This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. We'll start with the board. Who's here?
Michelle.
Nancy.
Do we have Steve Bedore any place?
Yep, Steve Bedore is here.
Okay, Jeremy? Jeremy Kellogg? Norma Zimmer here. Who else have we got?
Terry Jones.
Norma, this is John Candino is on.
Hi, John.
Hey, Norma.
Megan Ervey is on.
We're getting a lot of static. Do we have Glenn on, do you think, Terry? Glenn Roberts?
Yes. Yes, Glenn is on. Yep.
Looks like Megan is here.
Is everybody accounted for?
Vanessa.
Were you able to hear me? This is Megan, can you guys hear me?
Joanne? Have you got everybody down?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Everybody is on, so we will open the meeting with the public hearing to adopt local law number two to abolish our village justice position, which won't happen until 2022. But this was the first thing that we had to do. Is there anyone out there that wants to make a comment on this? Anyone on the board got any questions?
No, it's time.
No. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, if not, Nancy or Joanne, will you do a roll call vote? So that we can submit this?
Mayor Zimmer?
Yes.
Trustee Hyde?
Yes.
Trustee Grabowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bedore?
Yes.
Trustee Kellogg, is he absent?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay, we've got it adopted.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Okay, is Jay Patino on the phone?
No, he's not, I'll represent him.
Okay.
In addition to the report that was submitted, he would like to make him have us make a motion to approve the addition of a part-time police employee, primarily to work in the summer when the contract mandates double coverage. Then I would so move.
Well, I think we've got to do some serious talking about this before we start hiring people.
Well, we only have two police officers. And if they both work at night on the weekend, then nobody covers during the day on the weekend during tourist season, which I think is a very bad idea.
Michelle, we have about four people listed as part-time police officers on our current roster.
Yeah, I think we need to remove some of them. They haven't been very good at being available. Which is his issue is this guy is available.
My thought on this is that we should go to the union and talk to them again about this two-man coverage from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
I suppose we could do that.
I if the season isn't going to be as robust as it normally is. And if Josh David is uncomfortable being the only officer out there on Friday.
That's not the issue. The issue is the contract.
Well, that's right, so I think we should address the contract with the union again and see if we can get rid of that two-man coverage under these conditions.
We can try, but I can't promise.
Well, no, there are no promises in this, but I think before we start adding people on for at night, we've got to take a really hard look at it.
Mm-hmm. It certainly wouldn't be overly expensive in that time period. And there are other ways we're spending money that I think are less important, in my personal opinion, so you know.
Well, if you can find the money, Nancy, then we'll be fine.
That's Michelle, not Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, where did you come up with some money?
Oh, I haven't looked for it yet. But there are a couple of things we're, you know, doing like the booklet and stuff that perhaps we need to postpone. I I'm willing to talk, you know, to see if we can get together and talk about changing the contract. But if that doesn't work, and this person is more flexible than the other part-timers he has, I would support that 150%.
Sure, okay.
I would just add, Norma, I know we did leave a little bit of money in the budget for part-time police coverage. It's not significant, but there is some there. So I guess, I mean, as long as it isn't in addition to those other people and the funds are already there. I think it's there's a difference between that or asking for additional money.
I think you're correct, Alicia. And another question I have is, is the union rep also Brian, is he the same rep as with the DPW?
Yes, he is, yep.
All right, thank you.
We haven't seen a lot of positive outcomes with that.
I would agree with that, that's why I was checking. My understanding when we were in the budget process was that yes, we knew we would have part-timers and that we would need the part-timers since we had got Officer Moot was no longer with us and that we did budget accordingly. Now, we didn't budget for lots of lots of part-timers, but we did budget for part-time work, is my understanding.
So do you want me to table this motion until we check with the contract people with the union?
Michelle, can I just ask you one more question for clarification? He just asking for assistance on the weekend, so a Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it wouldn't be during the week when we discussed about them just using support from the county and state?
It's not Sunday, it's just Friday and Saturday evenings.
Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, Friday and Saturday night. I thought that the rate that was out there was going to look and see what the other part-time officers got. I thought this rate was higher.
I don't know, that's the number he gave me.
I'm pulling it up right now. It looks like they were making between $28 and $30 an hour. So it is lower than that.
It's 23.
And this guy was 23.
Yep, so he'd be less money.
But I believe there, you know, I'll verify with Tina before I put a number out there, but it is a limited pool of money. But I would think in that amount of hours, if he was only helping on a Friday and Saturday during the summer, the budget could probably support that.
Okay.
But I would want to verify that with Tina first.
Sure, so let's table this the next board meeting. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes. I would agree with that, we need a little bit more facts and figures from everyone involved.
Okay.
Anything else, Michelle, for the police department?
Um, that's it, things have been going well so far. Of course, there hasn't been much time, but so far, so good. And also, the chief contacts me anytime there's going to be nobody on outside of the Sunday, Monday.
Right.
So I always know if anyone has a question, if there's coverage or not, or whether we have to call the sheriffs.
Well, what, they call in 911 and they dispatch whoever is closest.
Okay, so I I'll know whether, you know, we have anybody covering or not.
Sunday, Monday, no.
Not on Sunday, Monday, but you know, if somebody gets sick or something and they don't want to call in a part-timer, they just want to leave that shift open and covered by the other two agencies. We had discussed that as a way of saving money.
Right. Well, I think it depends too, if it's a Saturday night and Josh calls in sick, then we need to have somebody.
Right, exactly.
But if it's a Tuesday afternoon, we don't need anybody. If you look at the police report, they had 17 calls in two weeks. And that represents 160 hours manpower.
Right, of course, we're in a very unusual situation right now. Where up until this weekend, very few people were out and about. And a lot of their reports are domestic and those kinds of things. So hopefully, I'm not hoping we get more more calls, but we will be busier.
Okay, anything else for the police department?
Nope.
Uh, Terry Jones? Are you there, Terry?
I'm here, I just want everybody, I sent a copy of my activity report. Hopefully, everyone got it, things are going well with the DPW. Me and my crew too, we're doing, we're getting, doing as much as we can. I know there were some issues over the weekend, some garbage and, you know, the docs are in, but those are faults of not ours. It's it's what we are faced with right now, and it's a pandemic, and people just have to be patient. Know everybody's patience have worn thin, including mine, and I'm sure most everybody on the board and at this meeting. But, you know, the the last thing that I do wouldn't want was those docs downtown, believe me. That bothers me more than anything, but they will be in when we get a staff. Thank you for bringing back my staff next week. And so we'll get those docs in, weather permitting, we get a good day, they will be in and ready to go. Of course, I've got one. Yes.
Two things, when people asked me over the weekend why the docs weren't in, I just told them that two people are human, not superhuman, and they're doing the best they can, and they will get in as soon as possible. And the second thing is, I'm wondering if we could deal with some of the trash can issues by just adding more trash cans so that the mess gets partitioned differently.
Yes, we do, we did add more on Thursday when we were in, and Dylan brought in a couple more on Sunday. I picked up garbage on Saturday because I had no one to cover. So I did a Saturday, Dylan did it Sunday.
Can I do it Monday?
Seeing that everything was a go thing now, that has definitely created a problem. Obviously, we're going to have overflow. So I guess, you know, on the bright side, everybody's saying that those docs ruined everybody's weekend downtown. From what I saw with garbage, everybody made some money. So I know it's tough right now, I know it's not, none of us want that. This is the last thing we want. We got to deal with it, these are the cards we're dealt, and we're doing the best job we can. And yes, I need three people to safely move those docs over there. I'm not going to put my crew at risk, and I know no one there wants me to put my crew at risk. I know it's just a matter of moving docs over there, but anything can happen. So we have a system down, and we use three people, and that's the way, you know, that that's what makes it work smoothly. And that's why, you know, it's worked so good in the past. So they need to bear with us, it's going to be a cooler weekend this weekend, that'll hold back some voters. And then hopefully, next week when we get our staff back, those docs are going to be in. And there's some other things we'll address. But what I'd like to do right now is get Glenn Roberts from the D C Forestry Department. He has some information, I think, on some trees that are being planted on the State Loop project that he's concerned about, and I think he wanted to address those. I know I brought those to the board in the past, but now you've got some expertise to actually lend some information to you. So Glenn, if you're there, you'd like to take over, go for it.
Okay, I'll take over for a while, you can cut me off. The the reason, I gotta, I gotta talk two different concerns for this planning project. And I guess my interest is, I just want to see that you have a successful project. The one of the main concerns that came out, glued at me right away, was one species of tree, it's Canadian Canadian red choke cherry, or famous Virginia, the Canadian red. That that is disease prone, and it gets a same disease called black knot, which probably, you know, it probably wouldn't, you wouldn't see it for eight to 10 years, and then all of a sudden, the trees become very unsightly with that black knot on the twigs. So it wouldn't necessarily kill the trees right out, but they're going to lose their leaves and just kind of look unsightly. And so that's that's the main concern. I would recommend that you just take that, have them remove that tree from the list and provide some other suggestions. And the other main comment is that you have a lot of trees of one particular variety. And I think that, in my mind, that's not a good thing for to have because if if something happens to that tree, for example, you know, one of, one species is an elm. It's supposed, it is probably a good selection, but if something happened to that elm, it's supposed to be Dutch elm, disease resistant, but if something happened to that elm, you'd lose 14 trees all at all at the same time. So my suggestion might be that you think about trying to get more variety out there, if you can. And that's that's one of the comments. There's another species, it's called the Amur choke cherry. I really don't have any experience with that tree in in the North Country. It might be a good choice, it has a fairly good recommendation, but it really hasn't been planted much. So and sometimes I think if you're taking a risk with something, you don't plant a lot of. And 16 trees, you get, you know, you've got 82 trees that you were planting, and if you could get it more diversified, I think that would give you trees that would hedge your bet more or less, and and you'd have perhaps a broader variety. The trees may, when they die, they might not die within a short period of time, that type of thing. So that's pretty much the comments, any questions?
Glenn, would you want to put that information, the name of those trees, in an email to Terry?
Sure.
To confirm this conversation?
Right, I can do that. The and I, the other day, yes, well, today, actually, when I got the information, I ended up just talking to, by email, to the city of Watertown. And they have, well, they they have, you know, their own experience with that Canadian select cherry. I happened to be with the city planner one day, and we were going around to a community that had a street lined with that cherry tree. And the homeowner came out and chewed out Mike Gornis pretty well because she wanted him to come and cut all those trees down on their street. So it was, you know, they become kind of unsightly. Anyways, another urban forester named Mike DiMarco, he sent me a list of recommendations. As he kind of agrees that more variety would be a good idea. And I'll store that comment to you because he took the time to write out several different species of trees that you could probably go to the DOT with, and just say, well, you know, we'd like to see more varieties here. Let's, you know, some people like to see the street lined with all the same species. And we know that was done with a lot of different, well, the elm is the classic example of losing everything all at about the same time. We're going to lose all our ash trees all at about the same time. So we're kind of, you know, we're sitting on that. So yeah, I'll send you an email. And did Terry talk to you about the Emerald Ash Forest?
Oh, I did mention, Glenn, I did mention it to Norma today when we spoke. And I have brought it up in previous meetings, especially last year, when those trees over at the country club were infested and were taken down. So they they are, I did tell Norma that we don't, as far as village trees, I don't think we have a lot of ash trees. If you have any advice or any information that you want to share with the board that maybe can help even the taxpayers or some of the residents that want to take care of them, I'll, I'll means go for it.
Well, that, I just, I'll, I should just get out and let you go back to your meeting, but the the two cents is, you have a population of that insect in the in the village. And right now, it's at a growing stage, and pretty soon, when it hits a high population, all the trees in in the village, all the ash trees will be dead, anything that's not treated. So if somebody was interested in saving a tree, boy, now would be the, you know, the time to do it. They can, even that Arbor Rescue worker, Terry, he could probably provide information. I think he has a certified applicator, and he could actually do the work or other other sources I could provide you. Just like you know that that's coming down the road, and those trees, you know, whether we got a pandemic or not, they're gonna, that's gonna coast along at the same speed now. And it's it's going to build up momentum within the next year or two. Something something else I had to, but that's that's about it, all I have, any questions?
This is Nancy Hyde, a board member, thank you for your information, and I I believe that we really should take a very close look at this. And again, thank you for bringing all this to our attention, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, we'll see you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Terry, are you still here?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Every, a lot of the merchants downtown have put out their flowers. I mean, Bellows looks just like it did the previous years without all of this going on. And several other people have flowers out today. The village got their flowers all out, thanks to Heidi Zahn and Gail Katie. They got them all in, they look great. So if you see either one of them, it was a free day for us to get them in. So Heidi's going to keep them watered and keep us going. But Terry, can we put the flags up? On the poles?
Yeah, well, they, if they go up, I'm not going to probably, I mean, I'm, I got a sore job to do tomorrow. And then I've got Thursday and Friday. If I can get lawns picked up, I'll try to get the flags up.
No, I don't need one to go up, right, but if that could be someplace on your list of things, it probably will be the last time that that these flags might even work. I don't know.
Right, it's on my list of things, Norma, it's just, it's tough to get downtown with the construction.
Well, I I get it, I just asked if it was a possibility.
Right, and it is, it'd probably be a better possibility next week when I have some staff back and get two jobs done instead of just one or three jobs at once. Yes.
Sounds good.
Definitely on, definitely on the list. Also, I see on the agenda, I know the town's opening their docks next, on the June 1st, I believe. So I didn't know what, I know budget-wise, we're in a predicament, and I know that we've got staff. And so I guess my question is, you know, what do we want to do as far as? I know the CDC has basically told us, public restrooms are pretty much a no-no right now. We don't have staff right now to maintain and clean them. So I guess I don't really know when we want to open the docks or the bathrooms, and I'm looking for some advice, suggestions. And maybe that's something that the board needs to, you know, kind of talk about. But I I don't really have answers because I've never been in this situation before.
Terry, when it opens, how many people would you see yourself needing in order to maintain both the dock and the bathrooms?
Well, if you want the docks open and to run, I mean, to run somewhat smoothly, and I say somewhat, because if we have to monitor bathrooms, two and two, but budget-wise, the budget doesn't really allow for that kind of staffing. I did see $4,400 in the parks personnel budget, which we don't have anybody in parks personnel. So if we were to move that into docks, that brings us up to around $8,400. If that's the case, then we can use that, in which case.
Terry, we took that money out of the budget.
Well.
That parks money is not in the budget.
It's in the budget that I'm working out. The budget that I have in front of me, which I think is the final budget, that's, it's in here. Where did, if we took it out, where did we put it?
I'm not sure where it went, but I, we took Heidi out, and that money was to cover her salary. So I don't know where.
I think Heidi was, wasn't Heidi in with all the dock workers?
No, no. Heidi hasn't been on the dock side in a couple of years, she's just done the flowers. I haven't got the budget in front of me, but I know that that money for Heidi that was in parks is not there anymore. And it just was like when we laid off people, we didn't put the money someplace else. It's gone.
Wow.
All I'm, all where I was going is if that money is there, that pays one person for eight payrolls. That's basically from June 4th, which would be the start of a new payroll period, to roughly Labor Day, maybe a little after Labor Day. That's one person, $8,400 at minimum. So I guess decisions need to be made. If we're going to cut, obviously, if you can only have one person, and you're only going to have that person for, for pay periods, if the if the norm is correct, and that's, there's no money in that other, then, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how you can operate both docks with one person, it's just impossible. She is this year.
Terry, not Terry, but everybody, I think this goes back to what I said last meeting about, we need to remember that we're a tourist community and that we have an obligation to tourists to maintain, not only maintain our reputation, but to provide them with the best quality experience while they're here. I mean, and we can choose not to do that, but.
Michelle, I couldn't agree with you more, but we don't have the money to create that experience. And we, the ink wasn't even dry on the budget when you were talking about hiring more people. We can't, we just don't have it. If you've read the sales tax forecast, that's even more grim than it was.
I did read that, and I also realized that because we laid all these people off, we're paying approximately $20,000 more in unemployment insurance this year than we did last year. I mean, I know it's complicated, I know there are a lot of issues, but within the constraints, we have to creatively try and find ways. Youth Bureau have any money for hiring some high school kids to do some of these jobs?
Just to interject here for a minute, I did go back to the budget that was adopted. The $4,464 is there, it is within the parks personal service line, and that was left related to docks, we did leave that in there.
There you go.
It's gone.
No, it's in there, it's been.
Yeah. It gives us $8,400 if you want to move that bonus over into dock. There's $4,400 we didn't know we had 10 minutes ago. So, I mean, I don't make those decisions, that's what you guys do, and you, you know, I just need your guidance. I'm as lost as all of you, I am more lost. I don't have the answers, I don't, I wish I did. I'm trying to run a crew of two people to make this community operate the best way that I can. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm running out of steam, and I need help.
I agree.
Well, I think we, Terry, we talked about this this afternoon. We've got to get these DPW guys involved.
And there again, I understand that, I I understand that, but now they're, you know, they weren't essential four weeks ago, but now we need them, and now we're essential, we need that staff. You know, we could have used that staff, we'd have had docks, we'd have had bathrooms open, we'd have, we wouldn't have been going through what we went through, unfortunately. And I know you guys, you know, did what you thought was the right thing to do as a board and to protect everybody from, you know, a virus. But at the end of the day, we're trying to run a show, and 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 if you thought it was bad this weekend, without the bathrooms, shut down a dock and try to run it with one person or two DPW guys on a weekend. I I just, I, I don't have the answers, I wish I did. I can't speak for the, I can't speak for the guys because they're in a union. I can't speak for the, I can't speak for the guys because they're in a union and they have to agree to want to work weekends. And I can't make them work weekends if the regular schedule is Monday through Friday. Uh, you know, and there again, puts the burden on the board because then you have to make a decision. I mean, I, I can't, you know, they, they have a contract and to change that contract, I guess, is something that you would have to agree, they have to agree with you and-
And that didn't work with you before.
I'm just, uh, just an observer when it comes to that stuff.
Terry-
I don't-
Terry, I'm telling you a hundred percent. I just, uh, you know, we, we need to all be in agreement. I think that the docks are key to our survival, if you will, as a board. As, not as a board, sorry, as a tourist community, but I'm only one.
I agree with you, Michelle, and I, and I have voiced my thoughts, you know, quite a bit. Again, we're a river community. We talk about that, uh, sales tax is down and people need to have the docks and the bathrooms to come and be in our village also. And we do need to provide these for the public. We have said off and on overall that the docks don't create money for us. They don't create any money, but we do know that they have paid for themselves. So it's kind of a wash, but by no means are they a moneymaker. I understand we have no money.
I think the other thing about us is they bring people down.
We need to go, go through the budget again and find so we can keep the bathrooms open. I, it just is bad, it's bad for the community. That's my thought.
I think the docks can take care of themselves. Most people can pull into the dock and get tied up if we have somebody down there. It's the expense of the bathrooms. We've got to figure out exactly what we have to do to be in compliance and how we're gonna cover that service. Maybe not even have anybody over at Mary Street, not even open that bathroom.
Or electricity if we don't have anyone there.
Pardon?
Or electricity if we don't have anyone there.
So, I just-
Well, yes, if you're gonna close the bathrooms at, at Mary Street, then you need to turn off the electricity and turn off the water so that we don't have people using it without being paid.
That'd be a safety issue not to have any lights over there. I don't think you can stop them from coming in.
Okay, that I can-
I think, yeah, I think she means the pedestals, the, the, the little pedestals. We can shut them down. Leave overhead on, yeah.
Right, right. No, I, I agree with the overhead lighting. Yes, definitely.
So we've got to give this some serious thought because the season's here. How we're gonna do it.
We keep putting it off.
Pardon?
We keep giving it serious thought and putting it off, putting it off.
I'll, I'll give you my, I'll give you my spiel and then you guys decide what you think you want to do. And I can live or I think we can make it work. I know there's no money. I'm just gonna throw this out there. Two people at each dock. We will make that work. We can make it work. That's the most minimal that I think we can do. I mean, you, you, you gotta have, if you want to make money at that Mary Street dock, you gotta take money for launching. You know, people have been, you know, we've, we've missed out on two good weekends right now. We probably would've made a little bit of money had we had somebody down there. Probably not more than what we're paying out. I don't know that. But at the end of the day, you can't be doing launch, the launching and taking care of the bathrooms and worrying about somebody pulling in for docking. So Mary Street, in my opinion, is the most intricate dock because it, it carries, you know, you have electricity and you have water and you have to run a credit card and you have to reservation. So that being said, the other dock pretty much runs itself. Norma's, I mean, you, you, anybody's anybody out there, for most part, can dock a boat. You know, it gets a little windy and it's nice to have somebody there to kind of help you out. Um, but that's where I'm, where I'm saying is two and two would work. I think we can make it work now.
What's the least of the week?
So you can, you guys as a board can decide, you know, whittle it down, do what it is you guys do to make those decisions and, and then just let me know how you want me to proceed. I will do whatever you think I need to do. Like I said, I, I've never been, none of us have been in this situation. It's unheard of. And, you know, we're gonna learn a lot. We're gonna, we're learning a lot from this. Um, you know, so we won't be caught with our pants down the next time, I hope.
Michelle, you asked the question, um, what, what days or what timeframe? Um, and Terry, I think what Terry, but Terry, you correct me, I think what he was thinking about was Thursday through Sunday.
Yeah.
And then you could have your docks open and your bathrooms open. And then if you don't have anybody attending the docks and you have to lock the bathrooms.
Right.
Is that correct, Terry?
Yes, and I can try to work the schedule enough where maybe we have one person at a time on the off hours and, you know, weekends, obviously, you're probably gonna need two people, especially on the busy weekends, you know, you get the fourth and whatnot. Um, but I will make it work the best way I can if you give me a staff. If not, then, you know, closing a dock down is pretty much the only other answer, I guess. I, I don't really, I don't, I don't really know.
Okay, well, Terry, we can't ask anymore than that, but we've got to, as a board, decide what we think over, give it to you, and then we've got to go to the union and they weren't the least bit interested in trying to help us out in the beginning. They didn't want to be with docks. I saw the mayor from Alexandria Bay today downtown and I asked him if their bathrooms were open. He said they were and they were taken care of by the DPW. They might have more people, they probably have got everybody working, I don't know. He didn't say. But I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is the DPW won't want to stagger their hours and be responsible for the bathrooms.
That's my biggest, and probably you're right, Norma.
But the problem is they work for us. If they don't want to do the job that's out there that we need them for, I don't know.
I know. You know, but they have a contract and that's, it's-
Well, they do have a contract. And if we ever wrote another one, we should put in pandemic. I bet there's not many union contracts.
Yeah.
Pandemic.
Yep. That's gonna change a lot of things.
Okay. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Okay. Are you still with us, Megan?
I'm here. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Wonderful. Um, I'm gonna keep it quick and just get right to the point. Uh, first thing I want to request from the board is approval of change order two dash four for global contracting. Uh, it's just for a time extension and a deduct, uh, change order for unutilized contingency for twenty thousand dollars that'll go back into the, uh, water treatment plant budget.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Dave, okay, on favor of the change order that Megan referred to for global?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, thank you, Megan.
Wonderful, thank you. And then, uh, just brief updates on water and wastewater plants. Uh, everything's been going well at the water plant. Uh, tester did come in last week and tore apart filter number two and cleaned everything out and installed the new hardware and everything's been working well. And they'll be back to do the second filter here in the next week or two. Um, so we're, we're just about tied the last knot on the filter ordeal, hopefully. Um, and we're, we're getting pretty close to ending that, uh, whole project altogether. And everything's been pretty quiet at the wastewater plant. All the guys are back and doing well. Um, that's, that's what-
Is the generator worked up?
The generator? Uh, nope, we're still waiting on the transfer switch. That should be here, uh, this week. So that's only, like, the generator's there, conduit's all ran. They just got to get that transfer switch and then it should be wrapped up within a couple of days, once that's here. Uh, guys have any, my board report?
I, I don't. I read through it. It looks fine.
Anyone got anything more for Megan? If not, you're good to go, Megan. Thanks for calling in.
No, thank you. I just wanted to kind of pass it a ton. I see that John Candino's here from Barla Judas. I didn't see him on the agenda. I just wanted to give him the opportunity because he's got a lot of good updates for us, uh, for our wastewater projects we got going on.
Okay.
So I want to make sure he had a chance to give everybody an update on all the good stuff we have happening, all right?
Megan, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, John. Now, Matt said nobody was gonna call in tonight.
Well, I know, and I was actually in the field today at another project, so I really didn't get a chance to kind of follow up, but I really wanted to call in. And basically, I know Matt, he sent in the update to the board, um, that you and I put together this morning. Uh, and I think it's pretty straightforward. Uh, it does tell you, you know, that, that, uh, we're making progress frankly in all fronts of the, both the wastewater projects, the ready project, both on the wastewater side and the, and the waterfront side, uh, and also the FEMA, uh, project. I really wanted to just kind of remind the board that, um, I had said two weeks ago, um, during the meeting, uh, that it, we were hopeful to have a, our couple of amendments, uh, ready for the board to consider, uh, which would take us through both of the FEMA and the, uh, the Riverwalk, uh, ready projects. Uh, we actually, it, it took us a little longer than we, than we expected to kind of get the numbers together. There are, um, there are actually a couple of things, uh, that we did discover with the frink dock, a couple of corrective measures that, uh, that were pointed out by the underwater survey. Uh, so the good news is, uh, we do have some, obviously, some funds with the ready project to address those. The better news is it's not gonna take a lot of those funds, so we will be able to, to shift those funds, uh, over to the, uh, to the Mary Street project and, uh, and the Riverwalk.
I was, uh, really happy to get a new contact to take the place of Molly. Make us feel like that we're still alive and well.
Yes, that was, that was excellent. Thank you. That was, that was very good. Um, so anyway-
We've heard from her since, so that's even better if that's-
Even better, yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, uh, we will be putting together the, uh, documents to request shifting those ones this week. And we'll also be forwarding to the board our two amendments for both the FEMA project and the, uh, and the Riverwalk, uh, the, uh, ready projects, so that you can consider them at the June 8th meeting, uh, in a, in a couple of weeks. But, I mean, short of that, things are moving along. They're moving along fairly well. And I just wanted to let everybody know, let the board know that you, you guys will get copies of those amendments probably by the end of this week, so you'll have-
Are you still working from home, John? You're good?
No, actually, uh, we actually opened the Watertown office last Monday.
Oh, great.
On a somewhat limited basis. Uh, we've got about half of the staff in there. People are kind of rotating, but we're, we're getting it back up to speed. So, yeah, we're, you know, things are getting back a little bit to normal. Close.
Does anyone have any questions for John? No, thanks for calling in, John.
Okay. Appreciate it. I know we're on the agenda, but I wanted to give everybody an update. And thanks, Megan, for thinking of us, thinking of me. We'll, we'll talk to everybody later.
Okay, bye-bye.
Yep.
Okay, we're down to, uh, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on that? The one thing, Alicia, that I'd like to ask is when we do a special meeting, rather than having a budget workshop or getting things convoluted, there is some language that we could use for a spe, if we used a special meeting language, we wouldn't have the issue that we had on the April 20th deal, right?
Um, I believe so. I mean, we were still fine on that, but, um, there is language that you could use to basically cover your bases by saying that it is for a particular purpose and any other business that the board chooses to discuss.
Now, I think that would be a good thing to keep in mind when we do these special things. Does anyone have a-
I do. I'm, I was surprised to see Hage and Hage still in the historic district project getting paid.
We're talking about the consent agenda items one through six? Well, that's where I was.
Okay. I guess I'm a little ahead of you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Can we have one through six? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
If you all have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make-
I got a second?
I'll second it.
On favor, on the consent agenda, items one through six?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And, um, on the capital projects, we kind of got behind. That Hage thing is a letter that the auditor sent to Ha, to Hage, to the legal people for the 2019 audit that they had to fill out and that's where we had to deal with Hage and he snagged us two hundred and eighty-five dollars to fill, do the letter.
Wow.
It was to do with the audit. The auditor had to have that information to complete our 2019 audit.
Okay, I just-
Yeah, I thought we were done with him.
It's really cheap on, on their part.
Um, can we have a little bit more explanation about the Barton and Leguzic? That's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and four hundred, four hundred and thirty dollars.
Where are we, Nancy?
Uh, Barton, B and L, Barton and Leguzic. What, what is all this for?
This is all, um, in the capital project, it's in that wastewater treatment project.
My understanding, my understanding, that's why getting it broken out a little bit more was, I thought for the capital project, the wastewater treatment was only a hundred thousand. Was that for Ready Grant?
Ready Grant is item thirty-two. And item thirty-one is the wastewater treatment plant with the first eight million and the two that's been added to it with Ready. They're putting it all into one. And that money comes from EFC. The funding for that right now is through EFC, the short-term money.
So this hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars is coming through EFC? Is it coming out of our capital project fu, funding?
Yeah, this is all capital project money, item seven.
I understand that, but where is it coming from? I'm confused. It doesn't-
Coming out of the grant we got from EFC for the short-term financing. And once we get Ready Grants all set up, the money, in fact, I think Megan has put in for some money, reimbursement money for that. This, none of this is coming out of the general fund.
Well, is it coming out of the water or sewer fund?
No, it's coming out of the capital project fund.
Aye.
We bonded eight million and EFC has got the short-term financing.
Okay, it's just an awful lot of money, but okay.
Does somebody want to make a motion to accept, uh, the capital project expenditures on item seven?
I'll make the motion.
Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Joanne?
Uh, yes, I just need, uh, you guys all have the new Chamber of Commerce, um, agreement and I just need a motion to approve that so we can, uh, send them their money come June 1st.
We should do them separate, I think. Do the chamber one and then do it all the same.
Yeah, Clayton, yeah, Clayton Chamber of Commerce. Can I get a motion to approve that if no one has any disagreement with it?
I'll make that motion, but as a side note, we have to look at all this for next year, which, which hurts me to say because they're very valuable for us, but I'll make the motion for this year.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. On favor for the chamber?
Aye.
Okay, and then I need a motion for the Clayton Local Development Corporation for their new contract.
And how much is that one? Is that nine thousand or ten?
Ten.
No, that's ten.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Michelle, on favor?
Nancy's gotta quit making a motion.
Um, and then I just wanted to let everyone know that the single audit and 2019 audit has been completed, and I will be putting that on the website.
And there's hard copies in the office too, right, Joanne?
Yes, yes, anybody can come in and get a hard copy if they wish.
When they're open.
Yeah, when we're open, or email me and I can send it to you.
If they want to read it there, but I don't think you should give the hard copies out.
Well, you can read it on the email.
If you're not gonna let them take them, then I wouldn't bother doing hard copies.
The hard copy, there's a file in, it's in the file, and then if anyone wishes to foil it, I can always send that to them through a document, but yeah, no, I wouldn't be printing everything out for everybody.
No, I'd just send an email, you know, you've got it down, they can get it online.
Not everybody is online.
Then it will be on the website.
You have to be sensitive to that.
Well, it'll be on there if anybody does have computer access.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm done with my part.
Hmm, okay. Um, good job, Joanne.
On the, go ahead.
On the?
Go ahead, Michelle.
No, I'm done.
Oh, you're done, okay, on this asset management plan that we did back in 2011, the one for wastewater treatment plant and water, all that, we got a couple of months ago a draft form from Megan, and that'll be updated to include that new million-dollar grant that we got, so that'll change, but the one from 2011 really needs to be updated, and Terry has offered to go through it and get the stuff out that's old and new stuff in, and try to get that cleaned up, it'll help us with some of our capital projects when we have to show how we, where we are and what we're doing, we didn't, on the audit, they called us out on documentation or lack of for some of the capital projects, so they, and they asked about our asset management plan, and it's 2011, so it needs to be updated, and he said he'd help us out, and Terry said she'd help us with it.
So, a question I have, is the asset management plan similar to a village emergency manual? For the village?
No.
Well, I guess, I don't think so, put your take on that, Alicia, I don't know what this village emergency manu- you know, is.
Text or not.
Um, is it, I am not positive, I would imagine it may have something to do with water sewer, but I guess I'm not sure what you're referencing.
Oh, I'm not referencing anything in particular, it's just having an emergency manual, and I think things like, you know, the pandemic and floods and hurricanes and tornadoes and things of that nature, so I'm assuming that they would be two different situations.
I wouldn't be surprised if there isn't one hanging around, I know that the town has one that was pretty outdated, I think there was a movement for that a few decades ago to develop one of those, but I don't know as though they've been looked at in a really long time, if it does exist at the village.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, the, Terry picked up the taxes, and Joanne's got them all ready to mail out on June 1st. Governor signed executive order 202.32, which will give that 21-day extension that we talked about at the last meeting, so that'll be good. Uh, just for your information, when we're, you know, we've got to get this union to help us out, on the number of hours that they got paid for, 1,688 hours to the tune of over $31,000, and they didn't have to show up for work, so I think that was pretty generous. You know, and they're gone, they're unemployment, and they'll be back to work here pretty quick, but I don't think that they're totally aware of the situation that we're in.
I don't think they care.
Well, we're gonna have to make them care.
Good luck, we just, we can't force people to find something important that they don't want to find important. I mean, it's, the thing we can do is say, hey, this is your job, do it, but to make them care, you know, and I'm saying, I know I'm being a social worker, I'm saying, I think we can't force anyone to care, we can't force anyone to want to be on our side, they either are, they aren't. Either way, you'll have to do your job if you want to get a paycheck.
Come contract time, there's gotta be some changes made.
Well, that's not for two years, so we can put that on the back burner, I also think, you know, they have a job description, and in their job description, I could be incorrect, but I don't think the job description says anything about working docs, et cetera, et cetera, I could be incorrect, and I think that's I think that's gonna be the snafu, but we'll find out in the near future.
Um, on the June 8th meeting, we're gonna do a joint meeting at 5 o'clock with the town, do we do two separate meetings, Alicia?
Yes.
There'll be two separate ones, okay.
Yes, yes.
And Joanne, we'll have to advertise that, it's on us, it's our meeting, so we'll have to get an ad in the paper for that meeting on the 8th at 5 o'clock for the joint meeting.
Can I ask where that meeting's gonna be held?
Pardon?
Online. Where is that meeting gonna be held?
It's gonna be just like this.
Okay, good.
I believe, I don't think we'll be open for business by then.
Okay, that's what I was hoping you would say.
If anybody's missing the mailbox, it was down in front of Key Bank, there was, they took it away. It was in the state right of way, and they don't know if they'll ever put it back up again, if anybody asked you where it is, it was a post office decision, it's gone, and Michelle, you were at the last chamber meeting, I guess, and they're gonna have a farmer's market?
Yes.
At the park? Okay, yeah, okay.
And I believe they're going to set it up, which is not hard, so that there's plenty of space between booths and such, so that there's lots of personal space and people can be socially distancing.
And they're not gonna have all the little crafty stuff, right?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can find that out.
Okay, I'm not sure either, I thought maybe you'd heard.
Well, I think the guideline says, no, they can't have the crafty stuff, they have to follow the guidelines.
Yeah, exactly, and they will, they're very good about that. On the same topic, on the topic of following guidelines, I got a lot of complaints over the weekend about stores, several stores, not, most stores were perfect over the weekend. They followed the guidelines, they did a store, they were very creative about putting as much of their wares as possible in their windows, I mean, they did great, and then there were two stores in particular that, one of them basically told me, I'll do what I want, this is a short season, and who cares, and didn't even have a mask on. And the other one was, said basically the same thing, that we're gonna let people in if they want to come in, we wouldn't turn anybody away, that's crazy, blah, 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 so I'm not really sure, you know, how to handle that, we could file a complaint against those stores, but at the same time, supposedly, on the first, they're gonna be allowed to be open, so I think, you know, what I'd like to see is that we just send them a letter saying that we're disappointed that they couldn't be compliant, at least then they know somebody's watching, because I hate for something like that, when everyone else worked so hard, to take away, you know, us going on to the next step or whatever, or shutting down all the retail, we need that retail.
Is that an answer?
I would agree with you, Michelle, I heard probably the same complaints that you did. We've worked really hard in New York State, and I think it's a very cavalier attitude for some people to have. It is an inconvenience, I understand, they want business, I understand, my business has been slim pickings to none. We all understand this, but as the saying goes, we're all in the same boat, I just think it's rather selfish of these other individuals, and I think it's very selfish of them, so, and I applaud the businesses that stuck to the guidelines. It's a short time period, and we'll say, it's a short summer, but these guidelines are for a short period.
Mm-hmm.
Do what's right, and you get more privileges, it's kind of the way it is, so I am concerned.
I don't think a letter should come from the board, from a board member. Who, I mean, lots of people saw, I was downtown a lot this weekend, and a lot of people didn't have a mask on, but they were kind of self-distancing, which was good.
Right.
I'm not sure that we should take whoever you saw, well, I know who they are because they've already called. And they were kind of offended, and they thought it was a board decision to, for you to make these, you know, to call them out on it.
I call people out on it all the time, wherever I am, because I don't want to get sick.
Well, then don't go in.
Well, normally I don't go in, but I was getting so many complaints from people, and you know.
Who are you getting the complaints from?
The store owners who were compliant, several people who went shopping, friends, neighbors, everyone was talking about it, how there were these two stores in particular that were not being compliant, and that, you know, one of them, I mean, both of them didn't have masks, it's one thing if a patron doesn't have a mask on, because they're not under the same, quite the same, I don't know how to explain it so you'll understand it, but I have a very strong sense of the fact that, I guess what Nancy said, not only that we're all in it together, but I don't want to see those few places ruining it for everybody else, people worked really hard to do curbside, and please, you know, other people, if you disagree with me, I'll shut up, but people worked really hard to do curbside. It wasn't easy for them, I mean, imagine the Ringer Gallery doing curbside, and they did it. And for these people to say essentially, I don't care, really bothered me in a tourist community especially, we're supposed to be, you know, if you really care about your patrons and you really want them to be here, well then care, it's not just about the almighty dollar. Okay, I'm done ranting and raving, and I'm.
Does anyone else have any comments or anything they want to talk about? I think that people were pretty, there were more people around than I expected to see this weekend. Which was good, so, and I thought they were creative parking downtown, they did a good job with that, and and they get some blacktop down, that'll help down there, and.
And honestly, most of them had masks on, or were social distancing. It was inside the stores that I was concerned, where there wasn't room for social distancing.
I have two questions, we as a municipality are opening the buildings on June 1st, is that correct?
Hello?
Hello. Norma, are you there? Alicia?
Anybody?
I would think Norma's call, but my understanding is yes, that staff will be back in the offices and in the buildings on June 1st, that is accurate for the town.
Alright, so it would be the same for the village, so then the library could, they could go in and use the building, not be open, but use the building, have one employee in.
The stipulation from the town is one.
Alright, and that's fine, I just need to know what to say, and then to reiterate, the bathrooms in the municipal in the municipal building, they will not be open, is that correct?
To the public.
It is advised that the restrooms are not open to the public at this time.
Okay, and I would concur with that, so thank you, okay, those are my only questions, thank you.
And we're gonna talk about the library letter, are you okay with that now, Nancy?
Yes, I am, yep, it's fine, yep.
But I don't think we can just email it to them.
No, that's too much of an ambush, no, it needs to be spoken about.
Right, I think so too.
Yes, yes, but it's fine, yeah, it looks good.
Okay, anything else for anyone? If everyone's all okay, can we have a motion to close the meeting?
And go into executive session?
Well, we talked about all these union things, unless we want, you've got something you want to do?
Nope.
No, I'm fine, yes, but my only other question would be, so it's a fairly, the timeframe, it has to be done somewhat quickly, correct? But I think we can't do it until the guys get back to work.
Well, I think Kerry's gotta have some guidelines for the, when they get back. Like, they're gonna have a department head meeting on the 29th. Terry works for the board, and those guys work for Terry, and I reread the contract today, and I know he feels that they aren't going to, but I think they've got to, they've got to tell us that.
Who's, the guys have to tell us that, is what you're saying.
I think that the board said, you've got to, I mean, it's been recommended that they not all work at the same time, that's been out there. So, if you have, why are we paying a guy to come in on Saturday and Sunday morning to pick up the trash and pay him three hours when we need help at the dock and help clean the bathrooms, he can do that too, and that'll be his regular day, you gotta get, I look at it, they've got to have five consecutive days, I don't care if it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or what it is.
I think we're all in agreeance with that, the stumbling block, the stumbling block appears to be the union. I don't think it's the stumbling block of the board, I think it's the stumbling block of the union, and what will they say? Because I'm not, for this short time period, I'm not in, I'm not opposed to that for this short time period.
I think the difficulty is that the union kind of, or the guys, because of the union, kind of run their own show and do their own thing, and don't feel obligated to listen to their employer.
Because they, yes, I think you're correct, because they have a contract.
Because they have a contract, because they don't want to.
They have a contract.
But if they want to play by the contract, then damn it, they have 15 minutes in the morning, and they have 15 minutes in the afternoon, and Terry's gonna have enforcement.
I would agree with you too, yes, yes, I agree with all of that.
And they can't call in at 7:30 and say, I'm not coming in today because I'm sick.
I agree with all of that, Norma, I agree with you.
They, they have not had to answer to anybody, and, I mean, we've got a truck up there right now, the truck they gave Heidi to drive had no brakes on it, and its inspection was due in March. But, you know, I don't know, I think that they've just got to help us out.
I agree, I don't think any of us would say that's wrong, the question is getting the enforcement, and I I'm trying to figure out a way to say this, I think we need more strength in the supervision area to make that happen, I think he has to know, first off, that we're behind him 100%, and we'll back him up, and then, you know, he's got to say, look, tough.
Well, if they call Terry and say, you've got to have different, you know, put these hours in different, one guy, Toby's the lowest guy on the totem pole now, so your hours are gonna be, I don't, I'm just using this, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and you will clean the bathrooms, and you will pick up the trash, and then the next week, it's gonna be the next guy has got to take that.
I like it, but I'm not the one dealing with it.
But, and we can tell Terry, that's what we've decided to do, and it's up to him, and we can get. And we can get, and they'll go to the union, and they'll kick and scream, and if they don't want to do the work that's available to them right now, then we've got to find somebody that can. Get a, take the money and get a cleaning service. Lay off Toby Manica. Get, hire a cleaning service.
There you go.
Buddy else, hire somebody, contact you to mow the lawns, I mean...
There you go, I'm 100% in agreement with that.
They got to wake up and smell the coffee.
I agree with you 100%.
I don't know if the board, let's all think about it and give Terry some information before he has that department head meeting with Alicia on Friday. He goes to call his guys back and tell them, this is what you got to do, and see what happens. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm just really disappointed in their total lack of understanding of where we are and what we're trying to do.
I agree with you.
And the idea is, they'll go, and they got to hire more people. We can't do that, so they're going to have to work with what we have.
Mayor, how much do we spend on flowers every year? I know that's a different subject, because I don't remember having that in the budget.
But we can't keep going the way we, I mean, we didn't raise taxes because there was no appetite for that. We made a commitment to try to keep our fund balance the best we can and not dip into that to do these other things that have come up. And we agreed on this budget, and we talked about it for three months. So it's too late, unless we can find something in there that would work. And I don't know where it is, there's not much fluff in it, that's for sure.
Mayor, I'm curious, do we have any money in the budget for flowers? Or where we don't?
We took it out of the budget from this year.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went down to get the invoice so we could put it in this year's budget. 2019, 20, not the new one. There was some money in there for beautification. But we didn't do as much either, there's no cucumber down, we didn't do the ones along the seawall. We did the entrance signs, the monument. I mean, Heidi is doing this for nothing, as far as the labor.
No, I understand that, I'm not...
You know, so, and she didn't think...
I'm just curious if we could have gotten it donated, and maybe we need to work on that for next year.
Where did you think we would get a donation?
I don't know, maybe from the different greenhouses. And we could put out signs saying, you know...
It's too late, now they're in the ground. I mean, you know, you talk about destination and tourist attraction, everything. I guess I thought that would be one thing that we should keep going. Not just the point that we didn't have them in, but the only other day that Heidi could do it was a couple of weeks ago, and it was too cold. I took the girls out to lunch on my dime today, so that won't become in our budget.
Hey, you didn't invite us.
So what else have we got?
I don't have anything else.
Everybody's all set?
I think so.
So, we'll put together some thoughts that we'll share with Terry and see if he wants to take it to the union?
I like your idea.
To see where it goes.
Yep, absolutely, I'm 100% behind you on that.
Okay, I'll put some things together and send them out to you. Anything else?
That's it. No, I'm not, I'm all set.
I also think we should use the excuse of, you know, people not working together too closely and not scheduling too many people at one point in time. Which is not really an excuse, it's the truth.
It's a fact. So, are we all good? We'll put it together for your comments, okay?
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
You too.
That's wider.